...in this state of America. To the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice.
John S.?
Here.
Alicia?
Here.
Robert?
Here.
John H.?
Here.
Nick?
Here.
Nick, okay. That's okay. Tracy Allen?
Here.
Barbara?
Here.
Doug?
Here.
Alan?
Here.
Nick?
Here.
Hannah?
Here.
Caitlin. The New Jersey Open Public Meeting Law was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advance notice and to attend the public meetings, excuse me, to attend the meetings of public bodies at which any business affecting their interests is discussed or acted upon. In accordance with this provision of this act, the Riverdale Regional Board of Education has caused notice of this regular meeting to be publicized by having the date, time, and place sent to the record, the borough clerks, and borough libraries, as well as posting in the school district principals' offices, faculty rooms, and the board office. According to New Jersey Public Law 2001, Chapter 226, the smoking or use of any tobacco product is strictly prohibited anywhere in the public school buildings or anywhere in school grounds, including but not limited to the parking lots, grassy areas, and athletic fields. Violators will be subject to a fine not to exceed $100.
Thank you. Barbara, would you read the mission statement?
Sure. The mission of Riverdale Regional School District is to provide a safe, student-centered environment in which each student is valued and respected, to challenge each student to reach their potential, to nurture every student's intellectual, social, physical, and emotional growth, to promote a healthy work ethic, a passion for learning, and a respect for oneself and other, to develop responsible citizens for our diverse community and an ever-changing world, to continue to involve our community in an active partnership, to provide all students the opportunity to achieve and exceed the New Jersey Student Learning Standards.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like to open it up for public comments on agenda items only. Okay, here are none. Okay, we have a presentation tonight called Youth Truth by our own Dr. Lisa Torres.
By way of introduction, while Dr. Torres is setting up, I'll just introduce to everyone what you're following. So, Youth Truth, well, first of all, the Department of Education requires that periodically, they say, that we should be surveying the climate and culture of our district from student's perspective, from parents' perspective. Here at Riverdale, we do that through a survey instrument called Youth Truth, and we've been doing it for many years. We do it actually annually, not periodically. I guess that is periodically, annually. But we've been doing it for many years here at Riverdale. Dr. Torres is the steward of that. She really handles that, the mechanics of it, and getting it out to the district. Yeah, it's right there. You got it. Getting out to the district parents and having, coordinating, coordinating it in our school buildings to make sure that our students have access to it, and we get the best responses that we can get. It surveys a variety of different areas, which Dr. Torres is about to go over with you. These are perceptions by the people who responded to the survey about their academic life, their social life in school, feeling safe in schools, and it's important information that we utilize throughout the course of the year, not just for presentations such as these, but in our conversations and faculty meetings about the perceptions that our parents and that our families and that our students have of our schools, and that informs us as far as our programming for the future. So, that's what Dr. Torres is going to present to you tonight. This is just a brief presentation about some of the items that we've seen in Youth Truth, but the, we use the word voluminous a lot about it. There's a lot of data that we get from it, and the questions change each year as well. But I asked Dr. Torres just to come in and report publicly on some of the data that we did find. So, Dr. Torres, it's all yours.
Thank you. Thank you very much, and thank you all for your time this evening. I appreciate it. So, I'm going to dive right in. I'm going to cover essentially the highlights of some of the data that applies first to the middle school and then to the high school, and then I will give you a kind of summative takeaway on what it all means. This Youth Truth data, this is our seventh year of collecting longitudinal data related to culture and climate within the district, and as, you know, Dr. Albro pointed out, we are taking a look at, you know, perceptions, how people are thinking, what they're feeling, and then we use a lot of this data to examine our different programs and our instructional processes. And so, we cover a variety of categories: student engagement, school culture, academic challenge, diversity, equity, resources. All of these things are measured in a variety of questions, and we actually have this data from one year to the next. So, today, what I'm going to do is go through the data as it applies to some of the goals that we have in the district. One of the district's strategic goals is to promote student health and wellness through the cultivation of a safe and inclusive and positive school environment, and a lot of the data that we collect is related to that very element or that very goal. And so, we also use some of the data to provide a self-assessment on HIB, which is also required by the state. When we take the data in, it is, as Dr. Albro pointed out, voluminous, and so I distill a lot of that data down in order to provide building-level administrators with specific building-level reports that they can use actionably to move their programs forward and to evaluate some of their programs. So, first, we have a district snapshot. Most, all of the data you're going to see in terms of percentages represents a percentage positive, which means respondents responded at 3.5 or 4 or higher on a five-point scale. And so, generally speaking, the data is, it's pretty good, and it follows, again, all of these different categories from students and family members. Our student response rate is very good. It's 96 to 98 percent. Our family response rate has been a little bit lower than we had anticipated or would like. We were around 10 or 12 percent respectively in the buildings. However, that is something that we can use to grow moving forward, right? So, we're going to use that information to try to attract higher respondent rates next year. I'll start with the middle school data, talking about family feedback. Overall, in terms of the areas of strengths, families find our teachers to be very supportive. They do identify a warm and welcoming, positive school culture, and they like a lot of the programs, the extracurricular and co-curricular and clubs that we offer, as well as they find that the students are motivated and well-supported within the schools. There are some areas for growth. This tends to focus on the technology, perceptions of our reliance on technology, concerns over cheating, and some interstudent issues that come about as a result of technology use. Academic rigor and curriculum, sometimes we find that parents are concerned about the level of challenge and sometimes busy work. You'll see that this is a discrepancy between what the students relate and how parents relate. Parents say, "We want more." Students often say, "We want less." Also, some areas of communication and transparency, parents feel we could do a slightly better job of being more clear, and they find some inconsistency in supports, and would love to see more world language, robotics, and advanced clubs at the middle school. Overall, family satisfaction, however, is very, very strong. What we do tend to notice is that 7th grade, as a transition year, is a little tiny bit lower, and that it improves as we go up into 8th grade. A lot of that has to do with the fact that we bring students in, not just from two separate districts, but three separate buildings, and so there's a lot of integration and transition that happens. But again, overall, the family satisfaction is very high. Take a look at students' respondents. They rate core areas of belonging and peer collaboration and culture as some of the highest categories. They feel very prepared for high school. Not surprisingly, they identify spending time with friends and coming to school to see their friends as one of the more important reasons that they like to come to school, but they also feel well-supported by teachers, and they like the academic challenge and the opportunity to think outside the box. But there are some areas, according to the students' perceptions, for growth, and that centers in the area of engagement and academic challenge. On the one hand, some students reflect that courses are somewhat easier, but others are concerned that there's too much homework and too many, and not enough time to complete assignments. Students do reflect a perception that they love more interactive activities, and there is some perception that there's inconsistencies in discipline and fairness, and occasionally some concerns over bullying and inappropriate joking. And again, these are, these are areas that we take them in, and we see how we can create programs that will ameliorate some of that. There are some categories under which there's obstacles to learning. There's quite a few. The areas that tend to be the strongest are students reflecting that they feel depressed, stressed, or anxious, and that it is extracurricular commitments that produce quite a bit of that stress. You'll notice also that 7th graders rate themselves as more anxious or more depressed than 8th graders, and I think that this is connected in part to the transition that comes, coming into a new building and a new set of programs and meeting new people. But all of these things, these are different areas, different students sharing their perceptions on what might be getting in the way of some of their academic success. Overall summary on the part of students, again, is very, is very strong, and we do notice patterns of growth between 7th and 8th grade. As students mature from one year to the next and begin to feel more comfortable in the school, they rate themselves, or they rate our categories a little bit more strongly. High school, high school data. Family feedback at the high school level. Two areas, families at the high school level reflect positively, our school culture, school safety, rather, and culture. Again, they feel there are very positive relationships with staff, strong extracurricular and co-curricular opportunities, lots of opportunities for students to explore their interests. They do feel that there's a tremendous amount of support from the special education department, the guidance counselors, and administrators whom they reflect go above and beyond to make sure all students feel included. There's also a strong curricular offerings. We offer their breadth of curriculum programs, AP honors, dual enrollment, and these are all very well-received from the community. Again, areas for growth, some concerns for communication and feedback, and a little bit on, in the area of relationships. They reflect some inconsistency in the communication that takes place. There is some reflection that certain spaces, while overall facilities are rated very highly, some spaces, like the gym and the locker rooms, and some of our technology, they feel could be improved upon. Like with the middle school, there are some concerns at the high school reflected by parents for bullying and creating a more inclusive environment. Remember that these are perceptions, and so what becomes interesting is you sometimes get, some groups will say one thing and the other groups will say the opposite, but all the data becomes really important when you put it together to try to understand how our programs are working out for our community. Family satisfaction overall is very strong. Generally speaking, our families are very happy, and we tend to see growth from one year to the next. This data is a little bit anomalous and doesn't align with the longitudinal data, so it's another area where we would take in that information and consider the types of questions that were asked and attempt to identify, you know, why that number is slightly off compared to the number that was reflected in previous years. Student feedback, again, strengths, belonging and peer collaboration and culture is very highly rated among our high school students. They feel that the environment is respectful. They feel that they have a lot of support and strong relationships with their peers and with staff members. Overall, they praise our academics, our AP, Supa, and electives, feeling that they're prepared for college. Our guidance counselors provide personalized support, and overall, there's a positive school community, and I think a lot of that is due in part to the, a number of co-curricular and extracurricular sports and activities that we offer our students that builds connectivity and helps them make friends. There are some areas for growth. We did notice, again, this kind of, some reflection that there's a focus on memorization and assessment. Students do reflect a desire for more challenging assignments and real-world application. So, while they praise our programs, they'd like more of that real-world connectivity. There are some reflections that there's, that while we offer a lot of courses, particularly at the upper level, it can be difficult to get in them because of the placement procedures that we have. And career and college readiness, there was quite a bit of reflection that they'd like that process to start earlier, so that's actually really good feedback for us in terms of our program development. And like the middle school, there's always, because you're dealing with perceptions, some concerns about consistency and fairness when it comes to discipline. High school students also have some obstacles to learning, and in many respects, they're very similar to the ones reflected by the middle school students. Feeling depressed, stressed, or anxious, and the importance of extracurricular commitments seem to be the strongest categories that interfere with students' learning from their perspective. But what we generally tend to see is that the number is higher around 9th and 10th grade, and then it decreases as the students progress through their, their programs here, which I think, again, when you're going through transitions, that creates a certain amount of stress, and then as you become more comfortable and more mature at managing all of those things, your experience is more positive. Certainly, having a job is something students in our upper grades are more likely to do, so you can see why that data, the chart looks the way it does. Most of the time, we see stronger numbers in 9th grade in terms of obstacles, and then those numbers decrease as you get to 12th grade. This was an interesting piece of data, reflection on limited internet access. In combing through the data, we offer quite a bit of technology, so it raises some questions. And again, this is another way in which we use the data to try to understand the nuances in our educational and academic programs and the, all the benefits that we offer, and this is something we would take a good look at to see, how's the question being phrased? What is the question asking in terms of getting that result, considering we are a fairly technology-driven district, right? Okay. Overall summary, again, from one grade level to the next, we tend to see growth across all of the categories. Some growth is stronger than others. Naturally, students in 9th grade reflect college and career readiness relatively lowly, or low, pardon my English, and then they will, that will improve by the time they get to 12th grade. And overall, we see strong improvements across all of the categories from 9th grade to 12th grade. And remember, this is percent positives, so these are the percentage of students that are reflecting, they chose four or five in answering the questions. So, all of this data takes us someplace, and where it takes us is to our programs. So, we take the data and we try to identify our needs so that we can use it to drive our action forward. We look at what our challenges are, and we look at what is reflected to us as positives, and then we try to create programs that will support growth and continued development moving forward. So, for example, if there's a reflection that there's too much testing or memorization and a preference for interactive and applied learning, that some, we can take a look at our curricular programs and see where we can do more of that. If students value rigor and see more, look for more challenge, or look for more college and career readiness opportunities, we can create programs or enhance the programs that we already have to do just that. So, as an example, if you think about a lot of the initiatives that we already have here in the district, as I mentioned earlier, students reflect a desire for more college and career readiness. We offer school-to-work programs and senior internship programs to support that. So, we would take this data and look at how our programs are doing and how we can move those programs forward. We've also created new programs. We've increased the number of orientation opportunities that we provide for parents and community members and students over the course of a school year. This will, actually, this year, we'll have our second year for the multi-language learner orientation, so that comes out of a reflection of perceptions that were provided through the survey system. We also have increased the number of grade level and school-wide assemblies to address specific student concerns. We've also addressed some of our curricular programs, particularly at the middle school, increasing our SEL and social skills and media literacy in, like, our drama courses and RD 101 as an example. And of course, you're all familiar with the Portrait of a Graduate, which aligns to our curricular programs, and that supports a lot of the work that we're doing to make our students good citizens and help them adjust to the greater world, and that's partly connected to the reflections that students and families have provided to us through this survey. Questions?
Can I take a couple comments I have first?
Okay.
So, you see, the, thank you, first of all, for the, for the presentation. There's a lot of information here. One thing I can say about Youth Truth is that they're very receptive to our questions about their questions. So, we have the ability to pare this down any way we want. This is a very, very broad swath of information we have right now. So, one of the conversations that we're having as an administrative team is how best to pull this data from our families, how best to pull this data from our students. You want to pare this down into certain categories based on some of the things that we're seeing. You saw something popped out as interesting to us that we don't quite know the answer yet as to why people have those perceptions. Maybe we want to drill that data down a little bit by the questions that we're asking. So, we're working with Youth Truth now to maybe revise what comes out. We do this in May usually, correct?
Yeah. Generally, in May is when we, April and May is we implement, but in January is actually when we start to take a look at the survey tools and, and work with them.
Maybe pare down some of this to maybe be less, less wide, a little deeper in the information that we're collecting from our students and our families, and also to increase the participation rate for parents. It's easy with the students because we do it in school, right? So, we get over 95 percent participation, but we're not getting a lot of participation from parents, and one of the questions I had for Youth Truth was, how do we promote that? How do we get more parents to participate in these surveys? We get a lot of surveys, right? We get Google surveys for everything. Anytime you go to a store, you get a survey, "Please rate us." I think people are a little bit surveyed out, and I don't, maybe that's reflecting on what's happening with schools as well, and we're not really getting a high percentage of, of people returning the surveys in a 7 through 12 district. So, we're asking for more strategies on how to get that number up as well, so we get a better base of information.
How does, how does the participation compare to previous years?
This year was a little lower than, than we've had in past years. The COVID period, actually, we had the highest response rate from the community. We had about a 36 and 38 percent response rate, which may not sound high to you, but is actually really, really strong, and that was between 2020 and 2021. And I do think that, you know, between COVID and then the return, you know, to the school district and things like that, you know, maybe the increased optimism that was happening, you know, that, those were like our highest years since we started doing the survey in 2018.
I have a question. Thank you, Dr. Torres, for the presentation. What was the total respondents? I know you're giving percentages, but what was roughly the number of respondents?
Uh, ballpark. Well, we have about, yeah, because I'm trying to think, we... Well, we have about, yeah, because I'm trying to think we, yeah, the, you're talking about family response, 10%. We have about 1,000 students, so 1,000 families at the high school and about a 12% response rate.
So the people, you know, families and students that are maybe more happy and more upset and we're missing the middle?
That's.
Yeah.
I think a lot of times, forget a school survey, any surveys, people who have something to say will fill out the survey, whether it's positive or negative usually. I don't want to say usually, but sometimes, you can say that. I don't want to say that. I'm trying to be optimistic. I think people who, who have had a bad experience and sometimes you have bad experiences in schools, they want that to be heard and that's important. I want that to be heard as well. But maybe that might dominate the conversation, especially when the population is so small.
So this is my point, right?
So unless we're at like 90% response rate, I think they are directional. I think you said that in the beginning. So I, I don't think that the administration in the district ever overreacts to data that they get. I think you're very methodical about how you look at it and is it a real problem or is it a perception issue or a smaller population that's experiencing something? Like to your point, we're so technology heavy, heavy and so much coverage in the building and everywhere else, is that like the technology issues at home versus here?
Would you like my theory on what that was?
Right.
I had a, we had a conversation. So my theory is that we, because we're a school, we have a very, very robust surf net about what kids can search and what they can get on their school issued laptops. And I think that's a reflection of that, that they don't have the access to some of the things that they want to have access to.
They may be misinterpreting the question that I said.
Exactly. The problem is the question.
Access to internet, not internet is not working.
Because we have, yes, correct. That's what I think it is.
And that's part of it too, where we look at the questions and we're thinking about how, it's, it's also how we ask a question, not just what we ask, right? And that also becomes part of our reflective process. When, when I meet with Youth Truth in January, that's something that I would bring up, like are, are students misinterpreting the questions? Are our parents misinterpreting the questions? Because that can impact the kind of response that you get and that would skew your data, you know?
I have two more questions for you real quick.
How many questions are we asking in the survey? I assume a lot.
It takes about 25 minutes to complete the survey. Each category has close to 10, so I want to say it's almost anywhere between 50 and 60 questions, depending on whether we're asking the parent, the parent fam, community or we're asking students. Because if, if you remember just real quick, when we go back, go really quickly, uh, sorry. Ah, no. I didn't need that noise. There. See, some of these categories are NA because they're not applicable to one group or the other. So in any given category, it can be, there's like, there'll be a broad-based question and then sometimes there's sub-questions. So you could have five or seven questions per category, but not everybody is answering all of the same questions. The survey's tailored.
And one of the questions I have for Youth Truth is to give us, I haven't seen the data yet on this, but how many people started the survey and did not finish it?
You just picked up one question.
So because you get into it like, I don't have, I don't, I don't have time with this.
Yeah, I mean, like it's never-ending, so you end up abandoning it some way through the thing. That would be interesting to see.
To maybe pare this down to make it a little bit more digestible.
Do we have the, the ability from a time, I know we don't do this every year, from a timing perspective though, to like, if it's pared down, it's really not 25 minutes, like, you know, like 15 minutes, I think is a sweet spot for surveys, like people, you know? But to like tie it to Community Pass or something where, when we are, when parents are registering, that it's part of that registration process.
It's not a bad idea.
I mean, I know it's forcing, it's kind of forcing the issue, but sometimes.
Tied it, but maybe not Community Pass, but it's something else that they would have to do normally. It just becomes part of that. We also didn't reach out, we just do this on our own. We didn't reach out to PTSO. We don't ask for any help and drumming up support. And maybe that's something that we do in the future.
Because if we don't have a large.
Much, much larger sample, you almost can't average out individuals who might be having some issues as opposed to a much larger school-wide, district-wide, you know, issue. And then the last, last question, are you able to look at any of the questions year over year to see if we have a shift, like in a positive or negative way? I would think more negative, like are we, is there a problem that's getting worse kind of thing? I mean, I could see it kind of going across this way, but you know, as you enter.
Short answer is yes. Yes. I can look at the longitudinal data from a variety of angles, right? I can actually drill down into very specific questions by category. So if I, if I were to, if I were looking at relationships, for example, I could go back from one year to the next and look at the specific questions and see where the respondents, you know, I could look at either the percentile, I could look at the percentage, I can look at, the only thing I can't tell per question is response rate. We have an overall response rate, but I can look at the longitudinal data that way. And I can also, Youth Truth provides very simply generalized or broad-based longitudinal data. So I can go from 2018 to 2025 in a category and look at it overall, but I'd have to go in individually to each question, but the short answer is yes, I can do that.
This could be very interesting to our staff. When we do make changes, it'd be interesting to see if it had the intended consequence of what we wanted out of it where, you know, if something blows up in one year from a response perspective, did we change something to cause it? Yeah. Thank you. Anybody else?
Thank you, Dr. Torres.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Good evening, you too. Okay. Now we come to the student member report. Before your report, I'd like you to both introduce yourselves. We met, but the rest of the board has not met you yet, so tell us a little bit about your, yourself.
My name's Hannah. I'm a senior and I'm from River Edge. I love being like with Riverdale and like being with the teachers and them supporting me and being part of the clubs like DECA and being a member of the golf team.
Uh, my name's Nick. I'm also a senior at Riverdale. I'm from Oradell and I play lacrosse at the high school and I'm also a member in DECA. And from eighth grade on, I've been at Riverdale and I've absolutely loved it and it is the best place to be.
We have a third rep who's not here tonight. That's Caitlin Nippus, who has a soccer game, I believe, tonight. So she, she'll be here at our next meeting.
Congratulations to you both.
Okay.
I think what we, what we usually say though, is also that we're looking for your input. That's part, part of the reason why we have you on. So please speak up.
When I met with him the other day, I said that, so. Anyway, go ahead with your report.
Uh, the middle school opening went extremely well. Students arriving for the first time were, were well-prepared after a summer of building tournaments, a successful technology academy and an orientation barbecue, which was attended by much of the class. Returning students have been able to hit the ground running and settle back into a routine they had gotten into last school year. Our eighth grade student ambassadors were outstanding all summer, volunteering their time to help new students learn about what would be expected in middle school and helping prepare the building for the day of class, for the first day of classes. Back to school night at the middle school happened last Tuesday. Family members gathered to meet teachers and other staff members. There's an informative presentation for the, those new to the district led by the council department and teachers. Those who attended appeared interested and satisfied with what they observed throughout the evening. The PTSO is also on hand selling Riverdale gear and advertising membership. Middle school sports are also underway. The cross-country team opens on the road in Maywood on September 18th. Their first home meet is at the high school on September 25th. Girls volleyball opens on September 19th at Westwood and home on the 25th as well. And congratulations to the Hawks student spotlight recipients for the month of September. Students are nominated by staff members for modeling great academic performance and/or high character. They are Trevor Manning, Aiden Morrow, Alana Salvatiera, Krista Chelli, Litovic Marelinski, Ian Sim, Evangel, Jalen Chinigo and Sarah Boss.
The opening of the high school was exciting and went smoothly as students and staff returned with great energy. Over the last three weeks, we've already experienced several highlights. Our newest Golden Hawks were welcomed with a ninth grade meeting with Mr. Pepe and the school administration on September 4th. Seniors had their annual welcome back card decorating event and are really looking forward to the great senior year. The fall athletic season is officially underway. Our football, soccer, tennis, volleyball, cross-country and field hockey teams have been competing with strong school spirit and supporting, support from the community at games and meets. The class of 2026 is also preparing for a memorable year with senior portraits, senior sunrise and post-secondary application workshops have been the highlight so far. With the upcoming events to back to school night, parents and guardians will have the opportunity to meet teachers, learn about the curriculum and engage with the school community. It is tomorrow night, Tuesday, September 16th, and the evening kicks off in our brand new auditorium with the ninth grade parent presentation by Mr. Pepe and Mrs. Kirkby. We also will be having the club fair on September 29th during both lunch periods and students will explore a wide range of extracurricular activities from academic clubs and honor societies to performing groups and service organizations. Riverdale does a really great job of promoting clubs and getting involved.
Thank you. Okay. President's report. Hope everyone had a great summer. Welcome back. I want to thank Dr. Alborough for sending us weekly the epic management reports on the referendum work. And I especially want to thank Trudy for spending the summer watching all these projects, which is like, I guess, building about five homes during the summer. And thank you because I know you spent an enormous amount of time doing it, so. Well done. The projects look great. When the public sees, you know, the auditorium, culinary room, all the other projects, I think they're going to be ecstatic. The August issue of Bergen Magazine had an article called "Students Get Real." It's about using AI. And one of our students, our seniors, Nathan Silverstein, was part of the, the group that they interviewed. So I'm going to leave this with Dr. Alborough. Maybe you should make copies.
I will.
I'll send it out to everybody. And that's basically all I have from my report. So we'll move to the superintendent's report.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome back. Welcome to a new school year. Welcome to 2526. I have a couple of items that I'd like to go over with you. We haven't met since July, so a couple of things have been happening over the summer, which I'll get into right now. First, this is a point of information that there has been a change to the way we're assessing our students as far as the state is concerned. The Department of Education has come out with an adaptive test, which will be field-tested in October, the NJSLA-A, so New Jersey Student Learning Assessment Adaptive, and the NJGPA, New Jersey Graduation Proficiency Assessment-A Adaptive. Will both be field-tested in October into November. This is a new change for us. We've always tested our students, obviously, but we're field-testing them on this new adaptive test. The test actually measures our students' progress, not just on a set of standards, but also on how they answer the questions that they're being asked. It adapts to the questions that they answer correctly or incorrectly, to ask them different kinds of questions to really measure more depth of their knowledge. So we're being trained on this right now. It came out in August and we were notified in August, I should say. We'll be trained in the next couple of weeks and months and that's what our students can be expecting in grade seven through 12, those that do, do, do take the tests in ELA and in mathematics. Next, just a, a quick update on the summer work. So Mr. Ferguson just reported on some of the projects that we've had going, some capital projects and referendum, referendum projects as well. We're in good shape. We're not done, obviously, but are, are, most of the projects are substantially complete that we can actually inhabit the rooms and utilize them for instruction, but there's still a lot of punch list items that have to be taken care of. So I'm speaking specifically of the auditorium, which has had an incredible facelift and it will be open tomorrow night. Those of you coming back to back to school night, parents will be able to see the auditorium. Most have not seen it yet, but it's not just a coat of paint. There's a lot of renovations that have taken place and they're still working on it. Behind the auditorium, we have rooms 216, 17 and 18. These were formerly robotics and STEM classrooms and TV media as well. They still serve those purposes, but we've added in one of the classrooms, an actual culinary classroom, which is just also not finished, but dynamite-looking right now. And this is something that our students certainly wanted and brought to the fore when we surveyed them two years ago. We were able to make that adjustment in our referendum project to add that as an offering for our students. The other two rooms are still dedicated to, one is more of a flex space and being used for TV media right now. And the other one is a robotics classroom, which was previously a robotic classroom, just one door over, but we're making great use of it already. A capital project that we have is room 406, which is right around the corner here, is it was a science, science lab. It is still a science lab and we're finishing that one up and we're hoping to get into that room hopefully next week sometime. And classes are relocated temporarily right now while that work is being done. So an extensive amount of work in addition to our 18 to 21 program. So there is a basement area of this school. Many people don't recognize that it's there, but it is, it is an area that the board prior to my coming here utilized, excuse me, recognized as an underutilized space and thought it would be a good location for us to put an 18 to 21 program. We have a responsibility to educate students who have special needs, if their IEP directs us to do so, up until 21 years of age. And that space is, is a space that we earmarked in the referendum to utilize for that purpose. It, it came out better than I thought it was going to come out. It really is just a magnificent use of a space that was not merely being used for anything but storage and, and some other things that we had down there. And it's going to be their space too. It's going to be those students, specific space for them, their own entrance, and it's something just exclusive for them and that, that the rest of the school does not, I don't want to say participate in, but it's a program specifically for them. And we're excited about bringing that. We've had the program for some time, but this is just a better flexible space for them to use so that we can grow the program in the future. Lot of other items that were done over the summer that are not as pretty, but unit ventilators on the second floor and HVAC and a lot of those infrastructure improvements and generators and all that business as well is, is ongoing as we speak right now. But a, a lot, we bid off a lot for this, this second summer of work. Next summer won't be quite as busy, right, Trudy? So we're putting less mileage on our shoes, checking all these projects out, but I'm pleased with the progress so far. Like anything else, there are delays, right? We had a number of delays with permits from the Borough of Oradell and had to kind of shuffle a few things around to get what we needed to get because everybody has to do their due diligence to make sure that everything's what it needs to be. We are after all school and not just something else. And it's important that we did our due diligence here and the town as well. But we've awarded overtime in some situations to make sure that the, the classrooms were up and running so our students could inhabit them early in the school year and that has worked to our favor. So we're in good shape and I'm hoping in October to report that these projects, besides maybe punch list items, are substantially finished. Another item, just to, to cover twice annually, we, we remind the public that we have, we, we pull data from our student information system on electronic violence, vandalism, HIB reports and things, and we report on these twice a year to the board and to the public. This is one of those evenings that where we do that. This information is always on our website. We don't, I don't really ever remove it from the website. It's there for the public's consumption. Our HIB reports, SS, called SSDS, Student Safety Data System reports are all there and every school district does that. It's not just Riverdale, it's a requirement. So this is that one point in the year where I do that. The next time will be January, February, we'll make the second report. Another item that I want to report on, because it should be done every September, or at least by September, is our graduation statistics from the previous school year. The total number of students that we had graduate last year was 258. That was the senior class of 2025. The breakdown of how that works, the students who passed using a substitute competency test. So I mentioned the NJGPA a few moments ago. The NJGPA is the graduation test, if you want to call it that, the graduation assessment that every school in New Jersey has to assess their students in, starting in 11th grade. They can take it again in 12th grade if they do not pass 11th grade. Students who did not pass that exam have an opportunity to take a whole menu of exams. I don't know how many is, Alicia, you probably know better than me. There's like seven or eight other ways to show competency on an assessment. And there were 43 of those students who graduated via that matrix. We had no students have to go to what they call portfolio appeal. So students who do not achieve in the NJGPA or have not passed any other competency assessments would then move to a portfolio appeal. We had no students. Appeal. We had no students that needed to do that. So, and that's a good thing. That's not a direction that you wanted to go into. We were able to get all of our students passing some sort of a competency assessment. So where that's concerned, we're in good shape. Some students have alternate requirements, they don't take either exam because of their IEP dictates that they're not, it's not a suitable assessment for them, and they graduate. There were six of those students who graduated through those meetings. But those are our numbers for graduation last year, and they, they should be reported annually. I'll make sure that was the last thing I had. That was the last thing I'm reporting. I told you it was a bunch, because we missed a month in August, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, committee reports. Budget and Finance.
We met recently just to monitor our state aid numbers, which are here in today's agenda, and we got an update on the referendum and how we've been progressing financially through it.
Thank you. Facilities.
Facilities, we met last, on Tuesday, it was last week. Last Tuesday, we reviewed the progress on capital projects in the building and discussed what we're looking at doing in the future.
Thanks, Doug. Community Relations and Technology.
Nothing to report.
Thank you. Curriculum, we'll put off to the next meeting. Policy and Governance.
We met over the summer to discuss several minor revisions that were made to the policies concerning fiscal accountability, efficiency, and budgeting. Most of those changes were just minor language. Those are being offered to the board for a first reading, and we'll have a second reading in a subsequent meeting. There were also several revisions to general policy and regulations, with the addition of one or two new policies that are also being offered to the board. And in addition, happily to say that a COVID-era policy has been abolished that required the schools to report their tracking of COVID cases and tracing. So that policy is officially being removed. And that is all I have to report.
Thank you. Okay. I move that all items designated with an asterisk be part of the consent agenda and approved. Do I have a motion?
I don't have a motion.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
I'll second that motion.
Thank you, John. Any questions? Go ahead, Trudy.
John S.
Yes.
Alicia.
Yes.
Robert.
Yes.
John H.
Yes.
Tracy Ellen.
Yes.
Barbara.
Yes.
Doug.
Yes.
Alan.
Yes. Okay, 13E. The superintendent, at the request of the Board Secretary, recommends that the Board accept line item transfers and the adjustments as listed in the financial report for the month ending July and August 2025. Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, John.
I'll second.
Thank you, Alicia. Any questions? Euryman?
John S.
Yes.
Alicia.
Yes.
Robert.
Yes.
John H.
Yes.
Tracy Ellen.
Yes.
Barbara.
Yes.
Doug.
Yes.
Alan.
Yes. Okay, at this point, I guess it'll be 13 double E. I'd like to carry over from executive session. 3D, 1 and 2, salary adjustments for staff, and 3E, 1 through 9, teacher aide and extracurricular appointments from July and August. Do I have a motion?
I'll move.
Thank you, Doug.
I'll second.
Thank you. Any questions?
John S.
Yes.
Alicia.
Yes.
Robert.
Yes.
John H.
Yes.
Tracy Ellen.
Yes.
Barbara.
Yes.
Doug.
Yes.
Alan.
Yes. Okay. Old business, new business.
Does anybody have any?
It's a new school year, nothing yet.
Just got started, Alan.
Okay. So, nothing for board discussion?
I have one, one quick item. It's an old one, and I think we dealt with it, but we were going to talk about no homework days, since we're starting at the beginning of the year. Did we formalize that, so all the teachers and the entire building is clear?
It's reflected on our school calendar also, the, I think we call them Days of Interest, and that's been published ahead of time. We went over it the first day of school with our teachers, that they're mindful of those days, and some of our students who may be celebrating holidays or other events, that we're careful about how we're assigning homework and giving allowances where they would need to be.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Anything else? Okay, at this point, I'd like to open it up to the public for comments. Please state your name and
I'm trying to get Benny to come up, but he won't come up, that's okay. Next time, Benny.
Please state your name and address, and keep your comments to three minutes.
Look, takers.
Okay. I'll close that. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay. All in favor?